The regular agenda is before the council and I would entertain a motion for approval of the regular agenda. This is my main second to approve the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Close the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine at the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests, in which event the item will be approved in general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council who wishes to add or remove an item of the consent agenda?
Item 6G.
Are there any other items? Not I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 6G. Close the motion carries. This is my main second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 6G discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Close the motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held on November 7th and a special city council meeting held on November 18th are before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council who wishes to make any changes to the minutes as printed? Hearing not entertain a motion for their approval. This is my main second to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on November 7th and a special city council meeting held November 18th, 2022 discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Close the motion carries. Tom and Pam Mortensen are here this evening and would like to tell us a little bit about the Race Across America program. Is that mic on? There's a button on there that...
The green button? That works as a switch. Okay. First of all, I would like to wish good wishes to everybody from the state of Florida. Sorry about that. I really, I still like to try mics best, but we're up here from Florida and doing our annual Race Across America. There's in what is a veteran's wreath. There's 10 blossom bouquets made each veteran's wreath representing the 10 special qualities that our veterans embody. There has been 43,000 handmade wreaths, 3,400 locations across the world, embassies, et cetera, and Detroit Lakes. First, with the evergreen, it means longevity and endurance. Fourth scent, purity and simplicity. The red bone shows great sacrifice and the circular shape of the wreath means eternity.
And my portion of the meeting or of the wreath is to talk about those 10 qualities that we see in military personnel. Their belief in the greater good, their love for each other, their strength, work ethic, and character, their honesty and integrity, their humility, selflessness, and honesty, their ambitions and aspirations, their optimism for America, their concern for the future, their pride in their duties, their hopes and dreams that did always come true but left them with no regrets. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to invite everyone in the audience here to attend at 11 o'clock Saturday morning at Veterans Memorial Park, the start of our next Race Across America project and its tribute to those who are veterans, their families, active duty, National Guard, and the service today. You know, they say there's two times you die in life. The first time you die when you take your last breath. The second time is when you're forgotten. Detroit Lakes will not forget our veterans and we appreciate the opportunity to appear before the council and like to thank those of you that are moving on from the council and those who are newly elected as well. So, thank you for your service and we hope you'll join some of us at one of the locations here in Detroit Lakes on these brochures and thank you again for the opportunity to show you more about the Race Across America program.
Thank you, Tom and Pam. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the regular council meeting and call the order. A public hearing to consider both assessments for Westlake Drive Phase 2. Before I move on here, can everybody hear back in the back? Hold up, hold up. Move the mic closer. So, I'm going to call on, sitting in here, John Pratt. John?
Mayor, council. Can everybody, can everybody hear me? Okay. In lieu of the usual presentation, this is a pretty straightforward public hearing on some special assessments. The background on this, if the council recalls, is we had sort of a unique situation on the Westlake Drive Phase 2 project where we actually connected the sanitary sewer services within the public right of way back onto people's properties because they had some unique scenarios there where they all had pump stations pumping into the forest gate. You know, one of the large goals of the project was to eliminate those, to eliminate that problem and it was going to be far more cost effective for us to do that work, which was outside of the right of way of our properties, but to do that as part of the project when the contractor was there, had to be subgrade, be watered, and so forth. So, kind of a departure from usual practice. We don't usually do work outside of the right of way. This was an offering made to each of the property owners if they would like us to extend that service connection and remove their old pump station and make that connection. We were going to offer that. So, we did include this for the original assessment because at that time we really weren't sure who was going to be electing to do this. This was voluntary. We approached each property owner, they wanted to do it, they actually signed an agreement given some need spent to do that work and this is the end result for that. And I think at the end, all the two properties sort of participated in this. So, these are the properties in general that we assessed a total of $4,000 in addition to the special assessments that were already levied on the properties. So, I would make one note that there is a correction in the rule. The assessment rule that was included in your packet, the Erickson property that ends in 40520 was apparently included and should be removed from the rule. That I would turn back to the mayor to get any questions.
So, is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or wants to make any comments regarding the proposed assessments for Westlake Drive Phase 2 sewer services? Three, none, that public hearing is closed and I will entertain a motion.
Public Works Committee did quickly review this and we moved to adopt that assessment rule as printed when on the air at some property.
There's a second. I'll second it. Motion would be made second to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment rule C for Westlake Drive Phase 2 sewer services. Further discussion with the council. All in favor of the motion say aye. Close the motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the matter of annexation of 54.54 acre tract of land in Lakeview Township and zoning tract R2, 1 and 2 family residential, B2, general business district, LB, lakefront business district, and R8, residential agricultural district at 557 South Shore Drive and 270th Avenue. So, this time I'll call on our community development director, Larry Remm. Larry?
This is the annexation of the former Rosen Tree property on South Shore from Detroit Lake and essentially the owners have asked that a portion of this annexation area be zoned R2, 1 and 2 family residential. They also asked for a portion of it to be zoned LB. This is along 270th Avenue and they've asked for a portion along 270th Avenue to be zoned B2. Essentially, the council has looked at this area and back in 2020, we looked at our comprehensive plan and we were looking for areas at that time where we could have some additional multi-family development and also some commercial development. And this area was one of the areas that we slated for commercial development and high density, multi-family residential development.
Okay, Larry, before you leave.
Kelsey, could you put the map up that shows the annexation area?
I can try. Do you have more to say?
Not unless you don't.
Well, as long as you're up there, I'm a little bit confused because there are two items on the community development committee agenda that have to do with this property as well.
There are actually three additional items. One is a subdivision and the other two are rezoning requests. One is a rezoning request for the plant that would rezone the plant area to R2, 1 and 2 family residential. The planning commission recommended approval of that rezoning and then there's a request for B2 zoning at the corner of South Shore Drive and 270th Avenue. It's the red area on the map that's up on the screen and the planning commission recommended that that be denied.
So, if we approve this first matter of this public hearing, we still would have to approve these other items.
Yeah, those would have to be done separately because that area is already annexed.
So, I think what I'll do is we'll take this public hearing and then we'll move ahead on the agenda and we'll take those two next.
Okay. That's the three.
Three. Where's the third one?
It's GH and I on the region.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, I would open it up for any questions or public comments. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, so I would ask that, try to keep your comments under two minutes if you could. Also, if you want to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name, address for the record. So, with that, I would open it up to anybody in the audience that wishes to make a comment or ask a question.
I think you all have just come to watch the government action. My name is Jane Hanson. I live at 2111 270th Avenue. I've lived there for 20 years. It's always been a state limits. We've got no water, sewer, streetlights, nothing. All we do is pay city taxes. Over those 20 years, I've had two neighbors, one of the north, one of the south. Marty Solomon's addition is going to bring in four additional neighbors to move back into my property and now they're looking to put up a high rise straight across from me. And I don't understand it. If the city does think that we have to move for an apartment building over on this property, I think there's better place to work on the northwest corner, back behind the trees and off from the lake access. It's the highest point of property on the whole field. As far as putting in commercial property on South Shore Drive, people seem to think there's like huge amounts of traffic going down South Shore. There's not. I've lived there for 20 years. There's the people that live out there and coming off of 270th, if you want to take the short way to town, you go by Timber Creek. The people that live over at Timber Creek are going on East Shore. You know, if I want to take the long way in there. So, I don't understand how they think a gas station would be viable over there. My biggest concern with the gas station is what happens when it closes. Now we have a vacant gas station over there and putting in businesses along there. If you go look at Jackson Avenue, nobody here is proud of Jackson Avenue. That's where they add again, in a residential area, they add in a bunch of businesses and it's nice work and we've got a knowing board out there. I'm against it.
Okay, David, thank you.
Hello.
I'm Lynn Levan. I live at 649 South Shore Drive.
Could you put the mic a little more?
Thank you.
Anyway, so I've lived there for 12 years. I agree, I think it's a bad idea to put a residential section behind the actual apartment complex and buildings and the gas station that they're talking about. Number one, it's a safety issue. They have that beautiful park that they just built. It's extremely beautiful. Yes. I have grown children that go there. I've lived there for 12 years and it's just unbelievable right now how much activity we have in that park with children. Now, if you put in single family homes and whatnot on the other side of a residential ride, commercial district, butcher, those kids have to walk across that to get access to that park across 270th. Well, that's the main thing, extremely dangerous for them. I don't feel comfortable with that. It's going to change the entire dynamic of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a beautiful residential neighborhood right now. People who live there enjoy it as it is with trails that you can walk in, give your dogs for walks. It isn't that busy with cars, so we don't have to worry about our children taking a bike ride down the street, which they do sometimes. And the public access is now on the other end of this property that they're talking about. You need to put a gas station in an apartment building, put it in everybody on the rises. It makes no sense. That's where the traffic's going to be. You know, they don't drive the boats down in front of my house. They come into the public access and they go back to this lawn region. Just makes more sense to me and it's my opinion that it goes this way.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir? Come on.
I'm Joel Olson and I and my wife, Paul, and I like home at 524 South Shore Drive. And I've got to tell you guys to start out, I know I might, I hope I don't go over my couple of minutes, but I just got hearing aids and tomorrow I have to go and have them adjusted again at Ascension Health and I think I'm going to tell him to take his hearing aids back because I can't hear. So, is there any way we could turn the volume up a little bit so the people in the back can hear what you're saying?
You know, this isn't our normal quarters. We're remodeling City Hall, so I don't know, does anybody know how to turn it up?
Well, anyway, I've got to get going here.
Okay, go ahead.
Wasting time, burning time. I would like to read first a letter from my next door neighbor there, Joe Schatz Snyder, who a lot of you may know, Schatz Electric and the Schatz Snyder family. This is what Joe has to say. To whom it may concern, I have lived most of my life in this neighborhood. We do have a business, Schatz Electric, on South Shore Drive. We're only open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. During the week, there is no evening where we can activate, no bright lights or speeding cars. If we would see an increase in after hours activity, I could not support this zoning change. I started working in this neighborhood as a paper boy 50 years ago. We have a very neighborly, caring type of folks living on South Shore. I would hate to see this compromise. Thank you, Joe Schatz Snyder. Joe said he could not attend this meeting due to a prior meeting commitments in Lakeview Township and he said, please accept Joel and Peggy Olson as my representatives. Now, what I want to say on my own behalf is, you know, because of the expansion of the launch facility there by the DNR, traffic had really increased, especially on the high traffic weekends in the summer, you know, not to say it forth, which is crazy, but sort of parking on both sides of the street and it's a parking mess right now and, you know, if something goes on to increase traffic, I just hope we have increased law enforcement to kind of patrol that and, but anyway. And then, most ridiculous than putting a service station on a car wash across from the new beautiful children's park. Wow, that's a, that should be, not a good, not a good place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Chuck? Yeah. Good evening. Chuck Collins, 568 South Shore Drive. For the record, I think it is on the record that I'm opposed to this for a couple of reasons, just to create a real backwards, but I did some research on planning zoning. I was on the county planning zoning commission for a couple of years and the first thing I read was about spot zoning. Now, there's going to be some legal arguments whether it's legal or illegal, but the definition of spot zoning is what they're doing right here. They're taking a piece of the property right in the middle of residential and they're trying to make commercial, right, business. So, by definition, that is spot zoning, all in your mind. And there are like 10 more suggestions on planning zoning, does it affect the neighborhood negatively, does it affect it positively? Is it a bias towards ownership? So, if you go through those things and they're in the, they're in the letters of opposition that I've sent, if you go through those things, just answer it fastly, like take the emotion out of it, but just answer those questions and it's obvious that this does not fit the neighborhood, the neighborhood plan. Another interesting thing is, the comprehensive plan may have listed this in 2020. In April of 2022, this was not even on the economic development priority list. So, there's a little bit of a conundrum there. It's not the plan, but it doesn't make the priority list, so there's some, you know, some gray area there. I am not opposed, however, to the complete thing being residential. I think most of my neighborhood is in complete agreement with that. We're for the building, for the houses. We're against the commercial. I looked at the room here and most of us are opposed to the business, but as far as the residential goes, a green light on my side of the fence, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Brad Erickson. I'm at 2103 270th Avenue, Jay's neighbor. So, our property is, faces directly to the west of this, it's a pole, it's a forefront business. We've been there for 21 years and I guess I never thought at all when we built there that there was going to be plans for commercial or business to qualify us. I see this part of town as a residential area for families, retired couples, an area to start businesses. We do our shopping in town now and we come home there to relax and enjoy the setting that it is right now. We built this big, beautiful park that, like they said, lots of families are using it and way more than I expected. Our kids have gotten out, but maybe your grandkids can enjoy it. And I just don't see this area with the park and everything being there fit to have businesses anywhere on 270th Avenue. I think there'll be safety issues like people already addressed because of the people that are using the park, walking, biking to it, so on and so forth. Traffic is an issue in this area already at times, especially in the summer and just with the planned development with, you know, around 100 lots or whatever it was, we're going to have an increase in traffic already. If you plan to put commercial in there, whether that be a gas station and then across a few months, this plan slash, you know, apartment slash business, you know, you're going to make the situation 10 times worse. I understand that the city needs an area for the homes like most people. We do support, report homes, but the business part, I just don't think it'll fit for this area at all and I'm just, I'm not excited about looking across the street at it six foot was tall. I'm just not.
Thank you. Further comments?
My name, excuse me, Nicole. My name is Dwayne Gunderson, 11663 Lake Forest Circle. Couple of years ago, wife and I moved on here as a retirement home. It's not an area, we had other options to go to Fargo or just buy any other place. We decided on Detroit Lakes. We decided on the Solomon addition because they're nice homes, nice quiet residential area. I'm certainly with these other folks against the commercial property there, also against the building of the apartments and also concern about what type of housing is going to be put in there. If there's any criteria for that, if there's any covenants as to what kind of housing or is it going to end up to be government housing or just why are we looking at? I guess the reason we did not go to Fargo was because of the crime is continuing to rise and we did not feel safe there. And as you know, that becomes a concern. So, I guess that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, speaking of the mic, otherwise we probably can't hear in the back.
I'm Margaret Gunderson from 564 South Shore Drive. My husband is Josh Gunderson and couldn't be here, but of course supports what I'm saying. First, I'd like to ask, there was an excellent letter to the editor on December 7th in the local paper from Mr. Ken Grill and I believe he's in concurrence that increased housing in the area is inevitable. It would be welcome. I'm sure many neighbors would welcome new neighbors. However, he is also opposed to gas stations, car washes, commercial development for the sake of the lake and protecting. There's more and more, but of course, it's an excellent article. May I ask that it be entered into the writing?
Sure.
Who should I give it to?
Oh.
Then, a great deal of mention has been made of the comprehensive plan. It's 196 pages long. I read it and unless my eyes blazed over a crucial moment, I didn't see any requirements for gas stations, car washes, commercial development in that area. There are a great deal of recommendations, encouragements, goals. The comprehensive plan is a framework and of course, the planning commission, the city council considers lots of things before approving projects. Of great interest, of course, is protecting Detroit Lakes itself, Detroit Lake and the surrounding watershed, natural resources, also maintaining a safe, orderly, enhanced environment for all residents. I'm hopeful that instead of viewing the comprehensive statement recommendation for combination use, that great thought will be considered in residential, preserving residential safety, security, the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Hebrat, 650 South Shore Drive. In the interest of not repeating everything already said, I'll be brief. We adamantly oppose the rezoning to business districts in these two parcels here. And my property is on the lake shore. I am subject to very strict and herious surface regulations, but yet we are potentially considering a gas station 400 feet from the lake's edge. I don't believe that these types of businesses belong in residential neighborhoods. Another one that consists of lake shore homes. Nobody should pay the taxes that we pay to have to look at a gas station.
Thank you. The clapping is just going to drag this out longer. Anyone else? So, just to be clear, everybody.
Mayor? There's one more gentleman.
Oh, sure. Come on.
I'll be brief too, but thanks to ecstasy, my wife's back there too. We just moved to 554 South Shore Drive for one of the reasons of being in a kind of quiet neighborhood. We've got three small kids. And like everybody else, I think the houses, everybody's, you know, it's inevitable that that lot or the area is going to get developed. You know, we're like everybody else, if we want to go to town, we just try to find the property. So, we... Then, a great deal of mention has been made of the comprehensive plan. It's 196 pages long, I read it. And unless my eyes blazed over a crucial moment, I didn't see any requirements for gas stations, car washes, commercial development in that area. There are a great deal of recommendations, encouragements, goals. The comprehensive plan is a framework. And of course, the planning commission, the city council, considers lots of things before approving projects. Of great interest, of course, is protecting Detroit Lakes itself, Detroit Lake, and the surrounding watershed, natural resources. Also maintaining a safe, orderly, enhanced environment for all residents. I'm hopeful that instead of viewing the comprehensive statement recommendation for combination use, that great thought will be considered in residential, preserving residential safety, security, the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Brad, 650 South Shore Drive. In the interest of not repeating everything already, so I'll be brief. We adamantly oppose the rezoning to business, business districts in these two parcels here. And my property is on the lake shore. I am subject to very strict and herious surface regulations, but yet we are potentially considering a gas station 400 feet from the lake's edge. I don't believe that these types of businesses belonging to residential neighborhoods, another one that consists of lake shore homes. Nobody should pay the taxes that we pay to have to look at a gas station. Thank you.
The clapping is just going to drag this out longer. Anyone else? So just, just to be clear, everybody.
I'm Mary. There's one more gentleman.
Oh, sure. Come on.
Well, we read too, my name's Max, to see my wife's back there too. We just moved to 554 South Shore Drive. For one of the reasons of being in a kind of quiet neighborhood, we've got three small kids. And like everybody else, I think the houses, everybody's, you know, it's inevitable that that lot or the area is going to get developed. You know, we're like everybody else, if we want to go to town, we try to find a traffic zone. So we're opposed it as well. We've got three small kids. We go out to the park. There's already bad traffic with the access point there. So we're, we're opposed as well.
I'm not going to stop letting you make comments. I just want to make a clarification. If the council adopts this and gives first reading to this ordinance, that doesn't mean we're approving the gas station in that location or the apartments, correct, Mary? Or just the next thing, the whole track in?
At this point...
Why don't you come to the mic so I can read it here?
The request is to annex...
Got to get closer to the mic. Do it on. Oh.
The request is to annex the property and also to have portions of the property rezoned as shown on the map that's behind you. So the portion in the corner that's blue would be Zoned B2. The green area would be Zoned LB. And the pink area would be Zoned R2 if you adopt the resolution that's in the background.
So what are the other items later on the agenda then? I'm still not clear.
The other items later on the agenda are the areas that you see on that map to the north of the dark black line of the annexation area. And that's a request. The green area would be R2. The orange area is also R2. And that's where the plaque is being located that they're proposing. It's a seven lot residential plaque. And then the red area at the corner, they're requesting a B2 zoning. So there's two separate parcels here. One is already given the city limits. That's why we had to have the zoning hearing at the planning commission. But tonight, they're at the, heading that's reforming the council. And this hearing is the area's south of that.
Okay. Now I have it. Thank you. Are there further comments? Yes, ma'am, come on.
Hope the public can hear me okay. I'm Anne Marie Ferguson. I live at 633 South Shore Drive. We two are opposed to having this development placed two doors long from, from our house. We moved to this area about six years ago. I have a 12-year-old son. We moved, or we moved for safety purposes. And by bringing in development as, as well as, you know, the, the strip mall and the apartments, brings higher risk for crime and, and increased traffic. And we pay good taxes and, and good housing payments where we're at. And I don't think it's fair to us that chose to live over these. So I just want to let you know we're opposed to this. Any type of housing that is not low income, we're welcome. I'm always open to neighbors. But I don't think it's fair to the rest of us, those on the lake and those across the metro, to have this part into our, into our area on South Shore. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to express how we feel.
How about get your name and address, please?
Amber Abraham. I live on 640 South Shore Drive with my husband Lucas. We moved to South Shore Drive two years ago. We lived on the north side of town. We lived by gas stations. We lived by retail. We lived right in the center of it. We moved to South Shore to get away. It is a neighborhood where my kids feel safe. I can let them walk to the park. I can let them hop on their bikes and go down to the landy. And moving in businesses is taking that away. And this is our dream home. We worked hard to get here. It was not easy. And with me having, if that gas station and the retail was there prior, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want there. How many other people are going to feel that way and not purchase lots in that neighborhood anymore because now we have a gas station? Now we have a car wash? I mean, is that going to hinder building our neighborhood? And I'm welcome to homes. Bring all the homes, and we, we knew homes would come there. That's fine. This is a neighborhood. This is not a business district. One of my concerns is now with freight traffic. We're going to have gas takers coming down South Shore Drive. We have kids going to the park. We have them turn on and off the South Shore Drive right by the park. This is a huge safety issue. And not only that, our route, South Shore Drive is not labeled scenic, but it is. All summer long, I watch the bowling alley rents those motorized bikes. I see people going around and around that lake. And now we're going to have a gas station for them to look at. It doesn't seem fair. People would run out there. We bike out there. We utilize those shoulders. It is a very active community. And it's for us, when we use them, it's to see the country, it's to see the lake. I'm aware we do have a small amount of freight traffic already, but it's not, it's not gas takers. I'm trying to keep, keep it brief. A lot of my comments have been touched on. I also looked through the comprehensive plan. I didn't see where it was called up. We had to put a gas station over there in that area, car wash, business, whatever's being proposed there. I can see it. DL's growing, there's no doubt about it. Like everyone has said, bring in the homes. I feel like this, if this, if commercial is one, although we need to research it, you cannot just throw it up. I mean, it's ridiculous. And the six-foot fence that was mentioned at last night's meeting are shrubs to protect the view, that's not going to help. The light pollution is going to be horrendous out there. It's going to be horrible. And that's on people's backyards. That's on people's front door. That's something they're going to stare at when they're standing there in their yard that people paid good money for. Commercial does not pollinate our neighborhood. You want to go to the gas station? Takes a few minutes. We don't care if it takes us 10 minutes to go to Walmart and get groceries. That's why we live over there. Detroit Lakes is a beautiful community, it's wonderful. And I love living on South Shore right now. I do not want to be changed into a business district. So I am opposed. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we're starting to hear some of the same concerns. I'm sure the council is factoring all these in, so I don't know how many more. Sure. Hey, Amanda.
Amanda, you're at 650 South Shore Drive. I just wanted to make a point, and it was mentioned last night, I believe, that although the zoning, the rezoning request, it doesn't have to be a gas station, doesn't mean it works. And I think if you're going to allow rezoning that allows for a gas station, there is that potential still. So as long as it's a potential for it to be a gas station, I think it should be approved for rezoning. And there's other lake business or other zones that can be done. But if this is a rezoning that allows for a gas to be put in, I strongly oppose that.
All right, thank you. So at some point, okay, go ahead.
One more comment. I'm actually looking at Southern, my husband and wife is with me as well. We live on 622 South Shore Drive, so on the lake shore, or the lakeside. I agree with everything that's been said tonight. We were supportive of putting in homes, putting homes, anything that's not subsidized. With the business side of things, there's been a lot of comments about what's going in there. One of the things that I know in reading is that annexation allows for the developer to get incentives from the city. And as the other gentlemen have explained, our taxes keep going up and up and up. What are you getting in return? We don't want that commercial that's by our house ruining that neighborhood for all the reasons I've just stated tonight.
Okay, thank you. So just for your information, at 6:01 PM, we have to hold a truth in taxation hearing under Minnesota law. So if we could get this wrapped up, I'm really hearing some of the same things over and over now at this point. So I think that very quickly here, we need to wrap it up and put it before the council.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity here tonight. My name is John Lawrie, I live in Illinois, Minnesota. And I'm an old modern engineering, and we're hired as an consultant and civil engineer to do the planning and initial design with the city on this project. Jason Garrett, the landlord owner, is also in attendance here tonight. So.
Louder.
On December 12th...
Maybe if this mic was turned up a little.
Is that better? On December 12th, a letter was prepared and submitted, I believe, yesterday to the city, a letter of support from Jason outlining some of the factors that have gone into what you see in front of you today. And I apologize, this is a unique parcel, being part in the city and part out of the city. Larry and I actually had a number of back and forths on the proper way to do this with the applications. And that's when we landed on these separate processes with rezoning some land in the city, as well as zoning what would be Phase 2, I guess, as part of the annexation. You'll see in front of you later the overall site plan, the master plan that the zoning in front of you does support. But with that letter, there's a couple of things I'd like to draw your attention to. Number one, on page 112, the comprehensive plan outlines eight criteria for annexation. And I would argue that this subdivision supports all eight of those criteria so far as sewer and water were expanded recently with the subdivision to the east with this subdivision on the west side of the road in mind. Another piece that the, on page 110 of the comprehensive plan, this, this land was identified in the short-term development area or short-term annexation. And I quote, "are most critical to accommodate the growth and development of Detroit Lakes." And the third piece that I draw your attention to is on page 173 that specifically calls out neighborhood commercial notes along South Shore Drive can be provided small-scale commercial and service uses to be growing neighborhoods. So, you know, when we started this, looking at this property and the potential of purchasing it and developing it with the city, the first thing we did is went to the long-term growth plan to look at how the city plans on using this property and plans on developing it. I've been an engineer for 15 years and done a number of subdivisions in different communities. And I found that it always works best to work with the community rather than against them. You're not going to get your own ideas across. The two need to merge together. And we've taken that approach here very early on in the process. We sat down with city staff and asked, what do we want to see here? How would you like to see this developed? And that, that's where this plan came, came into, came to fruition. The growth plan of Area 7 does support the proposed uses that are in place. And there were a lot of good information brought up tonight by the neighbors, which I respect. I would also point out that the growth plan that was developed in 2020 was put in place for a reason. And there are obligations that go with that, with the development of the property. I'd like to also clarify, I think Larry referenced this earlier, but I wanted to make real clear, the, our intent is to get the zoning with the annexation. And if the zoning would not be supported, we would withdraw our, our request for annexation as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have as far as the development goes. We're dealing with a lot of the emotional side of things on, on the uses. But there are technical details that could come into play with the subdivision. We work closely with city staff to deal with those and address those, and are confident that we have a solid subdivision planned out that we're presenting here this evening, so.
Okay, thank you. So Charlie, do we have to open up that public hearing for the truth in taxation in 6:01, or can it wait till we're done with this?
We should open it up at 6:01.
So either we wrap this up, or you guys get to sit through a truth in taxation hearing. So unless somebody's got a new comment, I would really like to close this public hearing and put it to the council. Okay, this public hearing is closed. Dan, do you want to craft a motion at this point? Or anyone else? I just called on you, Dan, because you're the...
Right, yeah. I guess I'm not quite ready to make a motion, but I would like to make a few comments. If that's okay. I know last night, you know, kind of had a abbreviated meeting because it wasn't a public hearing. Tonight was a public hearing, and I appreciate everybody for showing up here tonight. This is a passionate subject for a lot of people, apparently, and, and I respect that. I, I also respect the fact that a developer came into town, or somebody put up some money, purchased a property, and spent $2.4 million to purchase this property. I, I see this as a, as an opportunity for the city. We've got kind of a bottleneck on the north end of the community to go, go north. We've got Floyd Lake, and it's kind of just capping us off. To the west, we all know about Long Lake. Long Lake is a kind of that spot where we've got a gravel pit, we've got a lake, we've got all sorts of issues there. Going east, we've got issues that are, are happening, and, and we can't really go in that direction. So the logical location for, for this is, is to go south. And, and I've, I've been on the park board. I was on the park board for about 2005 until about 2016. I saw this property, and I thought, this would be a wonderful place for a park. We kind of brought that up at the park board. And we had neighbors coming out of the woodwork at that point saying, we don't want this. We don't like this. This is going to ruin our neighborhood. We've got a park down there now. Has it ruined your neighborhood? No. It's a beautiful park. I lived down in that area. I ride those shores. I, I ride my bike all the time. It is, it is a beautiful drive. It is a beautiful location. It is also good for, for development. We've had conversations well before 2020. I believe about 2018, we had a conversation, and a member of this council said, I think it would be a good place for some apartment buildings. After that meeting, it was said, are you, were you serious? And I said, yeah, I was serious. I think this is a good location for, for more housing, where there's high density. I think it's a good thing. I'm really not happy when we hear, hear the words of subsidized housing, government housing, low-income housing. What do we want in this community? We just want a bunch of rich people? We, we want to have all sorts of people in this community. We want to be welcoming. We want to be able to grow businesses. And we also want to be welcoming for developers. Last month, we said no to a big development. We said no to get money. We've said no to apartment buildings. We've said no, no, no. So with that being said, I guess I will make a, make a motion for a consideration, first reading ordinance, 503 for annexation of 54.54 acre tract land in Lakeview Township and zoning tract R2, one and two residential district, E2, general business district, LB, lakefront business, RA, residential agriculture district at 557 South Shore Drive, 270th Avenue. And I so move.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? Can I make a comment? Go ahead, Eric.
Here's a, this town's got a lightning crisis going on right now. These people don't want a convenience store in their neighborhood, okay? There's enough convenience stores in this town. You go to Town Hall City, there's a convenience store. There's a convenience store over Casey's also. We need to start respecting the residents in this town as far as what they want in their neighborhoods. Would I want a convenience store in my neighborhood? No. So I'm for the residents that don't want commercial in there. Will the homes get rid of the commercial? That's where I am.
You're going to be sitting through a truth in taxation hearing. So you should, you should really get a second to the motion before you... Yeah, if you don't have a second, then it doesn't matter what's said. So is there anyone that is willing to make a second, put it on the table?
I will do that, to put it on the table, because I do think the discussion is important.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Ma'am?
A couple of things, I've been writing notes up here. I, I go back and forth on this, I really do. And I think it's, it's a good project, that's what makes it so tough. For everybody that's here that's speaking negatively, I've had just about as many comments, emails, phone calls that said, I love this project, let's go. So unfortunately, they didn't show up. They don't want to be present for whatever reason. There's a lot of towns that would kill for a problem like this. You know, this is a problem that is a growing neighborhood, a growing community, that we are going to have tough decisions like this. I 100% agree with the R1, R2. We need that in town. We need housing in DL. You look at the north side, and that's where a lot of the apartments are. I think it's time to kind of spread the wealth and look at that. I think it's time to kind of spread the wealth and look at that. You know, going back to the comp plan that everybody was part of the council at that point did look at and review and said, "This is kind of the growing area of town where it makes logical sense." There isn't a swamp, there isn't another lake, there isn't a railroad track, there isn't a thing that's hindering our growth. As I kind of did a quick inventory in my mind today, I could think of three parks in town already that are either next to industrial, next to commercial, and have residential right there. So that wouldn't be out of the norm to do that with the parks we already have. The boat launch was brought up a couple of times and shame on the DNR that has had land since, I think, 2017 that have told us every year, "We're going to develop a mirror project right next to Holiday Inn." And every year, it's, "We hope to do it next year." That'll alleviate pressure on that south side access there. For whatever reason, that hasn't come to fruition, that's the DNR, unfortunately. The other thing I want to bring up is, is just to get it out on the table, if the developer decides to pull this off and not annex into the prop, into this city, there is, not only we lose our tax base, but now this falls under the county and the township regulations, which we all know are much looser and willy-nilly compared to what the city has. So if that goes to county, we could have six high-rise apartments there. We could have 64 storage buildings there that, what's the lesser of two of these? My comment to the developer and the engineer that's in the room is, you've heated the comments. I all think that the group would agree that we don't want a Holiday Inn gas station with three car washes, RV dump, LP filling stations, yada, yada. If it's a reasonable-sized R2 business, I think that might be the happy medium. I'm going at assumptions. All in all, I think with the growing plan, I think I support this.
All right, ma'am.
Well, here we go again. Last month, we had a meeting with even tight, wanted to build a four-story building. Where do they want to put it? Right next to housing. I'm not against businesses, but I'm against where they want to place them. When's the last time that you've had a gas station and people want to move, build their house next to a gas station? It doesn't happen. There is a deep, there are housing lots here in Detroit Lakes. And when I heard that these lots are being sold, I thought, "Great, we're going to have the extra lots that we need for brand-new housing here in Detroit Lakes." As I said, I'm not against businesses, but I'm against these locations that they want to put them in. They want to put them in your neighborhood and my neighborhood. They don't belong there. A strip mall and a gas station is not the setting that you want to have in anybody's neighborhood. Lakefront businesses and redo and B2 businesses do not belong in anybody's neighborhoods. What is the footprint that we want to look like for Detroit Lakes 50 years from now? Do you want to be known for our gas stations and for our strip centers? People move to Detroit Lakes because they want to be around lakes and trees and an environment. They want to be where they can say, "I'm proud that I live here." I don't think many people want to have a gas station next to them. We just put up a brand-new city park on the south side of Detroit Lakes. I happen to be one of those guys that on the north side, we had a park, they took our park away 30 years ago and haven't given us one yet. And I wish we had a park. Neighborhoods need to keep their identity as neighborhoods for a place where they can raise their family and grow up and feel safe. And when the stars come out at night, you can see the stars. You won't see the stars with a strip mall. You're going to see lights that probably don't emit and have to be closed up. We looked at our comp plan, we did the comp plan, but that time, all that area was pretty well empty. Since then, lake homes and houses across the lake have grown up and filled up that land. We're now a housing area. We're not a business district. This is for housing and this is what this property should be. Continue to be housing. As I said, people move to Detroit Lakes for the beauty of the lakes area and they want to see the trees, the environment. Nobody comes to Detroit Lakes and says, "Geez, they got a brand-new strip mall, this old one moved next door to it." That's not the reason they come to Detroit Lakes. It's about the quality of lakes here in Detroit Lakes. It's about our beautiful lakes, our beautiful environment. That's why they come here. This is why people move to Detroit Lakes. They want to be where they can say, "I live where the lake people are, I want to have fun." Now, it's Christmas time. The last time, the last thing that these people need is a Christmas present from the city Detroit Lakes that says, "We're going to build a strip mall next to you." That's not the present they want for Christmas. The present they want tonight is for us to vote this thing down and that's like what I'm going to do. I'm going to vote against it.
We really got to wrap this thing up because 601 is approaching very quickly. So I'm...
Mayor?
Can you wait really fast a little bit?
Probably. I just, I want to reflect on what some of the council members and what I've heard today. It's a really, really difficult decision. I take it account with Dan that shared about, you know, growing, mass position, parents and runs. For me, it's about maintaining the residential area, protection of the lake. And so what it comes down for me is, I would love to have this area annexed and have homes and more opportunities for people to have, to be able to live in that area. I will share Dan's comments about, when I hear concerns about not in our neighborhood, low-income housing, apartment, you know, it's kind of not in our neighborhood kind of thing. I don't know where that's coming from. But I would hope that we can be a more inclusive community in Detroit Lakes and not become this community that is only for the wealthy, where people, young people can't even afford to move in because there's no property available that I can't afford. And I've been working for 30 years. So those are my concerns. And I think, I would love to see the annexation. I am concerned about the design. I don't know. I think somebody mentioned tonight, does, you know, is this idea of a gas station or business set in stone in that little spot that we're going to rezone? Or is there an opportunity to move it in a different area that would make more sense for the neighborhood? But there's a lot of information going here and it's difficult to say yes or no, or to say yes to something that is not a little more settled in my mind. And so I may have to vote no. I don't want to take business opportunities away. We need them. But I just think there's room for improvement in this design, frankly. And I really think it's unfortunate that the property owner would pull the idea of annexation without reconsidering maybe some of that business idea.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the questions so we can be done with this before our Truth and Taxation. And this is a regular, simple majority or is this a two-thirds?
Just a simple majority.
Simple majority. Okay, I'll call the question, I'm going to take a roll, call the vote. Jamie?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Helen?
No.
Ron?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Indy?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Can you hear me? So the motion fails and first reading is not given. And I think I heard the resident, the owner say that you want to withdraw the rest of the stuff on here?
No.
That's not true?
The annex, just the annexation and it was voted down.
Okay.
You said you don't want to annex.
But you still want to consider the preliminary flat of Southwood Shores and the rezoning?
That's correct.
Those items, okay, right. But we're going to have to wait till after our Truth and Taxation because I think that's going to take a little time. Why don't we take one other item? Okay, we'll just wait for three minutes or...
Three minutes.
Yeah, we'll adjourn for three minutes.
A reset, I guess?
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. I'm going to call the meeting back to orders. So at this time, I'm going to adjourn the regular meeting and call the person. A public discussion on the 2023 budget tax levy, district of Truth and Taxation requirements. And I will turn this over to Heidi, our finance officer, to make a presentation on the budget and tax levy. Heidi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and public, this is our 2023 budget and levy presentation pursuant to our Truth and Taxation requirements required by a Minnesota state statute. So we'll get into it. First of all, I just kind of wanted to go through how the Minnesota property tax system works. So as of January 1st of any given year, the assessor determines the valuation of all the properties within the city and assigns those valuations. Those properties then are assigned a tax capacity number. Those properties are not taxed directly on their value, but rather on their tax capacity. And different property types have different class rates. And those class rates are used to get to that tax capacity number. So for instance, residential homestead properties are, you get to, you arrive at a tax capacity figure by taking 1% of the first $500,000 in value. And then anything over that $500,000 in value, it's 1.25%. So if you had a home that was worth $300,000, your tax capacity for that home would be $3,000. And that is what would be multiplied by the tax rates in order to arrive at what your tax bill would be. Commercial and industrial properties are done a little bit differently. So those are 1.5% of the first $150,000 of valuation and then 2% after that. Apartment, four or more units are at 1.25%. So just a little bit of variation in how tax capacities are calculated. Just going through the local property tax process, this is kind of a year-long process. So if you recall back in March or April, you should have received a valuation notice sent by the county to each property owner in the city. This notice generated, gave you what your property valuation was proposed to be for the following year. So this past March or April, you received a notice saying, "Your property is valued at X amount of dollars for your 2023 proposed taxes." If you had an issue with that, you were to, at that time, address that and go to either the local Board of Appeal, which was held, I believe we had our meeting back in April. Otherwise, you can go directly to tax court and appeal in that manner. And so those types of channels happen in order for folks to be able to appeal their property valuations. Tonight, that's not what we're talking about, valuations. Tonight, we're talking about the actual city's budget and levy. So back in, I would say about July, June or July, the city, we had started putting together the city's 2023 budget. During that process, I pulled together all of our department heads and give them their current budget, the past three years of activity that they've had, and asked them to pull together information for the next year and to kind of show me and tell me what they need for next year and tell me why and justify those. And so we pull all that information together, Kelsey and I go over that. And then we meet with the finance committee several times during the month of August and hold several different budget committee meetings very early in the morning. So thank you all for attending those. And kind of hash things out. And we go through everything. We, you know, we go through line items, we go through all the different various departments, we go through all the different various funds for the city and really kind of drill down into everything and determine whether or not the budget we have pulled together is what we really want. And so that was done back in August. Then in September, the council approves our preliminary budget levy that has to be adopted by the end of September per state statute. Then last month, the county sends out a proposed property tax notice to property owners that includes the date and time of this meeting that we're having this evening for us and then also the date and times of all the other taxing jurisdictions meetings. So the county board meeting would be on there, the school district meeting would be on there, and then any special taxing district meetings would also be on there. And then that brings us to this evening, which, you know, we hold this presentation, we accept public comment, and then the council considers the final budget and levy. So what do your property tax dollars pay for? Obviously, I just mentioned there are, you know, various different entities that tax you, one being the county, one being the city, then another is the school district, and then there are various special taxing districts that also tax you. And so I just kind of have a quick little chart that shows the various districts and approximately how much of your tax dollars go to those various districts. So it's, you know, roughly a third each to the county, the city, and the school district. The city is a little bit more than each to the county and the school district. This is a snapshot of the 2022 tax statements. As you can see in the upper right-hand corner, there is valuation information on your property. So if your property is under a magical number of 413,800, something like that, I've got it later on in this presentation. And you are homesteaded, you are available to receive a portion of your valuation is excluded from being taxed. It's a graduated type of thing. So the closer you get to that $413,000, the less of your value that is excluded. So if your property is valued at $100,000, you have a lot more of that valuation that's excluded from being taxed than if your property is valued at $400,000. So that information appears in the upper right-hand side. Down below, you'll see where the breakout is of your actual tax dollars and where they're going to. So the three arrows I have are pointing to Becker County, City of Detroit Lakes, and the school district. And then on the very far right-hand side, you'll see where the actual dollars come into So at the very beginning of our budget meetings we held in August, I asked the council to come up with some goals and let me know, you know, give me some idea of what their goals and priorities were for the 2023 budget. And when we did that, they came up with a number of them, which are up on the screen. So what they really focused on and wanted to focus on was affordable housing and our special assessment policy, knowing that our special assessments are quite high currently. So wanted to keep that in mind as we were budgeting. Knowing that Chief Swanson was stepping down as of the end of this year, wanting to add a full-time fire chief, knowing that our department is a very busy department and, you know, we need that full-time position in order to support our department. So adding that into our budget this year. Continuing to discontinue our reliance on LGA. The city has continually been decreasing our LGA over the last number of years. And so this year in particular, we lost a large chunk of LGA because last year, the legislature decided that they would hold us harmless and freeze our LGA. Well, this year, they didn't really do any of that. And so we got basically two years' worth of LGA reductions in this one year. And so kind of got a double whammy there. But so we're trying to wean ourselves off of LGA and just use those LGA funds for, you know, those more special projects or one-time uses and try not to use those for our ongoing recurring, you know, annual expenses. Other goals and priorities, our new public works facility, this has been something we've talked about for several years. We've been planning for it for several years. We've been raising our levy for it for several years. And at this point, the council said, "Let's make it happen. Let's figure it out. Let's try to get this facility going." The council also wanted to continue the discussion on snow removal. This was something that came up last winter. As we, as you can probably recall, we had a lot of snow last winter. As we, as you can probably recall, we had a lot of snow last winter, and there was a lot of discussion about whether or not the city should plow sidewalks. So that discussion was something that was continued through the budget process because if the city were to plow sidewalks, that certainly has budget, you know, that affects our budget big time. So the last item on our list was to maintain our roads. So obviously, you know, the city's got a lot of miles to go away, and many of them need attention. So just wanted to be mindful of making sure that we're investing in our repair and maintenance of city streets, whether they're new or old. So this, I know, is kind of difficult to see, but it's a snapshot summary of kind of where we sort of ended up, our 2023 proposed budget versus the 2022 proposed budget, excuse me, for the general fund. And all of this, this presentation will be on our city website. I'll check here up tomorrow as well, as long, or in addition to our big, huge budget document. So major factors in the 23 budget, so again, that local government A decrease, $144,599. So right away, before we even looked at any of our line items, that was one thing that we had to make up right away. All of our union contracts were up as of the end of this year, so that was an uncertainty that we had to sort of factor in into our 2023 budget. We also saw some really big increases in our workers' compensation insurance costs and natural gas costs, so had to factor those into the budget. Increase the levy to pay back the city's existing bonds, that tends to fluctuate every year. It wasn't fluctuating this year a lot in any one direction, but it did increase just slightly. And then increased cost of capital equipment, increased levy for the new public works facility, future debt. So as all of you have heard probably several times, you know, if we can even get the capital equipment, you know, that's a struggle in and of itself, but if it is available, it is very expensive, much more expensive than it has been in the past. And so, you know, we had gotten to a point where we had felt very comfortable with our capital funds. However, then all of a sudden, this stuff comes along, so we have to pump those funds up a little bit more. Again, that new full-time fire chief position, and then after having those discussions about sidewalk snow removal, that and having discussions about lake weed removal, neither of those things is included in this budget. So just need to reiterate that once more again. This is a proposed tax levy chart, so this kind of is probably a little difficult to see again, but again, this will be online. Just shows you how the overall property tax levy is split out. So the largest piece of the pie, of course, is our general fund, which funds, you know, police, our general, you know, city hall type of activities, general administration, planning, zoning, you know, building inspections, that type of thing. The sort of, I guess, at maybe 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, if you look at it as a clock, the rust-colored is debt service, so that's us paying back our debt. The one immediately, kind of to the left of that, is our equipment and building fund. Those are kind of our largest pieces of the pie. And then, you know, you've got our smaller ones, such as our sports arena, development authority, library, airport, and fire funds. So those are kind of the very various sources that end up utilizing your tax dollars. And this is the breakdown of that chart you just saw, the raw numbers of that. So overall, our proposed tax levy is looking to increase 9.86% from where it was last year. I think it's important to note that, you know, we did see property valuations increase a lot, and so that sometimes affords us the opportunity to increase the levy without it having a really negative impact on our tax rate, which again, is how property taxes are calculated. So how do we compare to other cities? It's kind of always important for us to benchmark ourselves to our peers and see where, how we compare. Detroit Lakes is the fourth one on this list, and so what these bars represent, so the reddish-colored bar is our certified levy, the blue is what we receive in LGA. As you can see, our blue bar is pretty darn small, especially compared to all of our comparables. I mean, obviously, Moorhead on the very far right isn't necessarily real comparable to us, but they are one of our neighbors, so we do include them as well. But as you can see, our certified levy isn't, you know, isn't really out of line with any of our peers, with, you know, the Brainerd's, the Lumiches, the Fergus Falls, Baxter, Alexandria. You know, we're all kind of in that same range of where we're setting our levies, and so, you know, we're kind of right now all in that same ballpark. This is a graph that shows our tax capacity values. So again, this is property valuations. As you can see, we've had, you know, some steady incline, and then these last few years, we've seen really sharp increases. And so just, I guess, a product of the environment of, you know, the housing turnover and, you know, housing sales and things like that, it's been very strong. Okay, so then, city's net tax capacity rate. So this is kind of where it boils down to, what is our tax capacity rate? So what tax rate are we going to have for 2023? And this isn't necessarily our final, final number, because the county hasn't finalized the tax capacity numbers yet, but I did get an updated report just this morning from Lisa here at the county. And so this is a fairly accurate number. So I'm projecting right now, this year, the Detroit Lakes tax capacity rate is 42.26%. I'm estimating that our 23 tax rate will be 40.53%. So we're actually, our tax rate's actually going to go down quite a bit. Again, that's because of our valuation increasing so much, and our valuation overall increased about 15%. So while it sounds like our levy increasing 9.86% is a lot, our tax rate is still going down, so that's a good thing. So the big question, does that mean your property taxes will increase? Obviously, that's what people are mostly concerned about. So just as an example, the median home value in Detroit Lakes is 200, sorry, I can't, my eyes, I think I need to get my prescription right over here, glasses, but 208,600 is our median home value now in Detroit Lakes, and so I'll just use that as an example. The homestead market value exclusion gives that property and excludes $18,500 worth of valuation. So that property is only taxed on 190,100 of valuation. So again, getting to that tax capacity figure, it's that 1%, so it's 1901, just drop those two zeros at the end, take that, times our tax capacity rate, and then you end up with that city property tax dollars for next year of $771.84. So if your property value is consistent from '22 to '23, now I know that always changes, it's hard, it's hard to do apples to apples, you know, or apples to oranges from year to year, but if your value was consistent, your taxes would actually decrease about $31.44. Now, this is just the city's side, and this is the only information that I can really present, because I don't know what the county's doing, what the school district is doing, or those other special taxing districts. So comparing that to your other bills, it's about $64.32 a month, you know? My internet bill, I don't know that I have the catalog of internets, but I don't think I have the course plan either. It's about $55.95 a month. Gas is about $319 right now, so 20.16 gallons of gas for that. Your live streaming TV or cable service is about $65 a month, so right in that same range. And your cell phone, you know, right around that same $60 a month. So, you know, you're paying for those city services at about the same rate as those types of services as well. The commercial industrial property side, it's really difficult to pull a mean or a median valuation, because they vary so very much. So we just use $500,000 just as some sort of a benchmark. Again, using that tax capacity calculation, the total tax capacity for a $500,000 valuation is 92.50, times that again by the city's tax rate, what that's proposed to be, equals $3,755.69, which again, would decrease from the prior year by about $152.99. And again, that homestead market value exclusion, so everyone always, you know, obviously wants to save money wherever you can, so these are the opportunities where you can save money on your property taxes. So that homestead market value exclusion, again, values up to $413,800. If your property is not homesteaded, you know, talk to the county, they can help you make sure that that home is homesteaded, if you, you know, it's your primary residence, all that type of thing. Obviously, property tax refunds, that type of thing, when you're doing your taxes, make sure you take advantage of those. There's a special property tax refund for any tax increases over 12% and $100. There are disabled veteran, homestead exclusions, blind, disabled, homestead classifications, and then senior citizen property tax deferral programs for those that may be interested or those that may qualify. And all of those programs, again, are administered through the county auditor's office, so you can contact them for more information. So the complete budget, again, and this presentation will be available on the city's website probably tomorrow. I had to update our physical city hall location on my presentation, because we have moved to our temporary location at Monseigny Home Streets, but you can also come there and get a copy of any of this as well if you prefer. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions for Heidi? Also, I would take any comments also, if someone had a comment. Hearing, please.
Wait a second. Shaun Carlsen, 945, this is not on. I'll speak out, but hey, can you remind me, because I completely forgot, what is the net tax capacity? I hear that term a lot, and I just don't remember what it means.
Yeah, so a net tax capacity is, is your valuation that is taxable, so that it's like your valuation minus any homestead exclusion, times that, times that class rate. So the various class rates that, let me try to get back to that slide. This one. So like residential homestead properties, it's 1% of the first $500,000, and then 1.25%. So that's what your, that's what your tax capacity is. So like I said, if you're a $300,000 property, you know, well, going back to, going back to this one, you know, that tax capacity is, the tax full market value is 190,100, the tax capacity doing those tax class rates is 1901, because it's that 1%. Does that make sense? Sorry, I.
No, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
Difficult to explain.
Any other questions from the audience or comments? Hearing ended, public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the final 2023 budget and the final 2022 tax levy collectible in 2023.
The finance committee looked over this and gave consideration. The final 2023 budget and final 2022 tax levy collection of 2023, nice and bold.
Motion's been made, the second, to adopt the final 2023 budget, final 2020 tax levy collectible in 2023. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. So is this next item, Kelsey, a public hearing possible, or is it?
No, it's a resolution.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, a resolution for consideration, resolution granting the city council consent for the final taxes payable for 2023 for the HRA 11.
Motion's been made, the second, to approve a resolution granting the city council consent for final taxes payable for the 2023 HRA levy. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to say a little bit above this HRA levy, because it's something new for city in Detroit Lakes. I also want to let people know that on November 18th of 2022, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has designated and awarded the Detroit Lakes HRA Housing Authority as a High Performance Status for its operations of all operating for the elderly Detroit Lakes and disabled and the family housing. This award is given for the physical operations and upkeep of our buildings, also for our financial operations, and for the use of the capital funds that we have. The HRA of Detroit Lakes is dedicated to making a difference for housing of our low-income citizens. With the HRA tax levy that we pass here tonight, as a city, we'll be able to give 0% interest loans to help homeowners to fix up and rehab their homes for a need of repair. This is for income-based repairs and loans up to $12,000. We're going to receive approximately $120,000 a year on this, so we're going to be able to help approximately 10 families here on this. As you know, the median family income here in Detroit Lakes is approximately $48,300, as both mom and dad work. The HRA has available for people what we call vouchers. If you're struggling with the cost of rental, making your rental housing payments, you should come to the HRA office located at Pleasantville Apartments on Auton Avenue in Detroit Lakes and ask for available vouchers that could help you with rental assistance. I want to mention that the staff has done a lot of work on getting this through, it's taken about a year of paperwork, but Heidi and everybody else to get all this through. But I want to give a big thank you to Susan Biarca, who's our executive director, for all the work she's done, our staff, and also for our volunteer board of directors. There's lots of needs for the families in Detroit Lakes, and I also want to mention the goal on with this housing, the Becker County Food Crafty, they're moving forward, but they're proud of their building a new building, because that's a much-needed area that is having food for the people, that's going to be in our north industrial park. And we're also working closely with the Northern Dental Clinic, who does dental work for low-income people, and we're one of two selections of the sites that they're looking at, we're hoping that we'll get it here in Detroit Lakes. But that would be a $12 to $13 million building, that they're going to be putting in with approximately 25 employees, that'll help a lot of people that don't get dental care, because they just don't have the money. So a lot of good things to help the people that are in need.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Without objection, I'd like to move to agenda item 5G, H and I. Yes?
5G is consideration to a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Southwood Shores Estates at 557 South Shore Drive. Plaid Commission reviewed this, CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I sub move.
Second, motion's been made, the second, to approve the preliminary plat of Southwood Shores Estates at 557 South Shore Drive. Is there anyone in the audience, this isn't a public hearing, but does anybody have any questions as to what this resolution is? Larry, will you just run through that quickly?
Could you put that up too? Essentially, this is a seven-lot residential plat that's right against South Shore Drive. So the map will be coming up shortly. So yes, the dark outlined area is the seven-lot residential plat of Southwood Shores Estates.
The motion's been made, the second. The motion's been made, second, is there discussion by the council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item E is consideration to first reading of ordinance five-oh-six, rezoning property five-five-seven South Shore Drive from R-A agricultural residence district to R-two, one-and-two family residence districts. Yes, Plaid Commission reviewed this, recommends approval, CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made, second, to give first reading of ordinance five-oh-six, which rezones the property at five-fifty-seven South Shore Drive, R-A to R-two, and it's the same, the same that we just looked at right there.
The same area that's being rezoned, yes.
Discussion by the council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I think I'll let one of the people that voted no on this subproposal take this one because I can't bring this one forward.
I'll make the motion to give consideration to rezoning at five-five-seven South Shore Drive from R-A to agricultural residence district to B-two, rental residence district, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second, to deny the rezoning of property at five-fifty-seven South Shore Drive of R-A to B-two, and again, we have the map up there, Larry. Which parcel is this?
The parcel, that's. The parcel at the corner of South Shore Drive and two-hundred-seventieth that is in red is the parcel in question.
Okay, discussion by the council.
I think it's still a comment I have, is again, you know, we've got people here that want to spend money in our town, want to grow our community, and we're saying no to any development, and, you know, we hear comments of, why can't we get this company, or why can't we get this business in town, because the city council says no. We never say that. This is an opportunity where we're telling people, no, we don't want your money, we don't want your development, and I'm really ashamed, so I can't support this.
I want to say about that is, we are not against business in Detroit Lakes, we're against where they put these businesses. Residential is residential, it is not meant to have a service station, a car wash, and a shopping mall, this is not everyone, everyone business rather than you want, not in residential over there, so.
Yes, sir.
John Mallory again, and thank you for the time, keep it brief. At this point in time, I would wish to withdraw our application for this zoning without, you know, this is a unique situation where part of this parcel was not annexed, and without the annexation happening, there's no point for the rezon. But I will say that, and he said this on the front end, and maybe it wasn't quite clear, but we worked closely with city staff and looked at the information that was out there, and, you know, we weren't coming out of the blue with this zoning. This is what the city asked us to develop this as. And so it is a little frustrating that we're trying to work together, trying to do something that the city wants, and then getting slapped on the wrist when we're trying to be good partners. So we want to continue to be good partners with this. The neighborhood commercial that's defined doesn't have a direct crossover to your zoning code, that's defined in the long-term growth plan. When we looked at the uses, there's a number of uses in the lakefront business that is not allowed, excuse me, a number of neighborhood commercial businesses, like barber shops and salons and things like that, that are not allowed in the lakefront business district, and are allowed in the general commercial, and that's why we went for the general commercial. There have been discussions about a service station, but there's nobody that's ready to put a service station on this corner. We wanted to do this once and put, and get the zoning ones to allow the uses that would support the neighborhood. And I think that's why the city asked for the commercial to zone there, you know, this isn't us making it up, it's, it was requested specifically in the growth plan and my city staff to make this corner a commercial, so.
Okay, so you want to, John, you want to withdraw this item?
Aye.
At this point?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we won't continue on. We'll go back to the regular agenda unless there's anyone in the audience that has an agenda item they'd like you to move.
Mayor, can I make just one comment?
Sure.
There's not so much said, and I, there wasn't time earlier, but I don't think this is a terrible plan. I would, this was some reconfiguring, I don't, I don't think it's too bad. I, I will not be on the council next year to vote on this, but for example, I see that northeast corner as, as not a bad spot for, for Lake, for Lakefront Business District or multifamily, and including low-income multifamily. So I hope the developer gives us another shot here and we find a solution. I also think that westwardly corner would be great for, for multifamily, is my opinion. Thanks.
Hopefully, John, we can work something out. Madam?
I'd like to add to that as well, because I won't be here either. And I certainly didn't vote against this because I didn't think it was a place for multifamily dwelling, or multifamily. I, I have multifamily in my neighborhood, or what we'd call my neighborhood on Long Lake Road, or Long Lake, and honestly, I, I don't see any difficulty with multifamily residences, or multifamily apartment complexes, as you might say. The one that is on my road is beautiful, and it's well-kept up, and I don't see a lot of extra traffic coming in and out of it all the time. And, and I say the same thing for our low-income housing in this area, in this town. We have some very nice low-income housing here that is kept up very nicely. And I don't want us to turn into a town that says, oh, but not in my neighborhood. I, I don't want to see that here. I think we need to be more welcoming in there. And, and I also agree, I, I think that lakefront business could certainly go there.
Okay, let's go back.
Matt, I wanted to say that I'm not against the front houses, I'm against the shopping mall, gas stations, and I want you to understand that.
Okay, look, Mayor, as long as we're down to truth of taxation, may I?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I, I look at this and go, this is what cities do and plan. This, if we have residential sprawl, which is great, you're going to have just houses forever and ever. I mean, you look at the larger cities, this is commercial planning, and setting this up that there is commercial neighborhood, it thinks. Everybody thinks of a gas station as a negative connotation. I think it can be done right, and I think working with the, the developer and the architect, it can be done right. I, I think this is, the city trying to do its due diligence for twenty, thirty years down the road. I think that we need to readdress this sooner than later.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Dan, let's move back to the community development agenda, so I think we're back to five.
All right, we're back to some exciting stuff. Is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance five-hundred, amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Detroit Lakes relative to section eighteen to allow industrial uses as a conditional use in selected environmental lakes, shoreline districts. Larry, you want to take this down, or you want me to run through it quickly?
This is just second reading, so we've heard about it before. This is essentially a change in our zoning ordinance to allow industrial uses as a conditional use in natural environment, shoreline districts of three natural environment lakes up on the north end of Detroit Lakes. There's already significant industrial development there. It doesn't appear that other types of development would be likely to go in this area, so we want to have the ability to do that. The DNR has reviewed our resolution, and they are.
All right, everybody reviewed this from the Plaid Commission to the CDC, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made, second, to give second reading and adopt ordinance five-hundred, amending our zoning ordinance relative to section eighteen, allowing industrial uses as a conditional use in selected natural environment, lake, shoreline districts. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance five-hundred is adopted.
Item B is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance five-oh-one, adopting city code six-one-six, requiring licensing of short-term rentals. Larry?
Again, this is second reading of the ordinance, we're transitioning from the conditional use permit type of approval for short-term rentals to an annual licensing procedure.
All right. We looked at this last month, CDC located last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made, second, to give second reading and adopt ordinance five-zero-one, requiring licensing of short-term rentals. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so. Motion carries.
All right, item B one is consideration to approving the summary ordinance five-oh-one, adopting city code six-eight-six, requiring.
We don't have, we don't have enough bullets to do the summary, so.
All right, we'll just skip right on over, and we'll do that one next time. Item C is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance five-oh-two, adopting the zoning ordinance to eliminate short-term rentals as a conditional use in residential districts. I guess we reviewed it last month, CDC reviewed it last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made, second, to give second reading and adopt ordinance five-zero-two, amending the zoning ordinance to eliminate short-term rentals as a conditional use in residential districts. That's the correct one, wasn't it?
Yes.
Discussion by the council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Second reading is given, and ordinance five-oh-two is adopted.
Item D is consideration to first reading of ordinance five-oh-four, amending the zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals in residential districts. Larry, you want to take this one?
Yeah, this would alter the zoning ordinance, and it would allow licensed short-term rentals as a permitted use in residential districts. Right now, it's unclear or a little bit vague as to whether or not short-term rentals should be a permitted use or not, and I think since we're changing to a licensing procedure, we ought to make it very explicit so people understand that it is a permitted use in those districts.
Okay. We reviewed this last night, that CDC came out positive of recommending approval, it was not unanimous coming out of there, but I, I so move the motion.
Can I, can I say something, wait?
Let's get a second first.
Second.
Motion's been made, second.
This is regarding VRBOs, right?
Yeah.
Okay, is there ever going to be a limit on how many VRBOs we do this down?
This ordinance has a limit of one hundred licenses that we would issue.
How many do we have right now, Larry?
There's about twenty.
Okay, so there's a limit though.
Yes.
Is there any way we can look at possibly the limit even more, because VRBOs, we're competing against motels in this community, and I don't think everybody wants a VRBO next to them either. That's what I'm here, so, that's all I got to say. Aaron Winkins, certainly, again, at some point we'll have to put it back through, put it in, okay?
I've got a comment on this, because a lot of communities are kind of closing back on how many things they really do allow, less than a hundred, because you look at a lot of these landlords, and they're buying up a lot of these homes for, exactly for this, and we've got, we've got a housing shortage here in Detroit Lakes. And I, last realtor I heard, now we got, we're down to seven houses in Detroit Lakes to sell. Well, if you got people buying these houses strictly for vacation rentals, it means there aren't going to be enough houses, people want to live here firmly and work here, so I, that's my concern.
Staff made all of those comments when we first started talking about short-term rentals, so I don't disagree with you.
Well, I know that, but I'm, I'm thinking we should look at this, because we do have an extreme shortage, and I looked, I looked today at some of these rental houses that we have for HRA, and boy, a lot of these landlords have many, many homes, and some are, may not be used for vacation rentals, but I mean, it's what's capping out there, people buying up rental homes.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask the community development committee to take another look at that. Dan?
Of course, they might be on that committee next year, so.
We'll find out.
Well, that's the new chairman. So the motion is to give first reading, first reading of ordinance five-oh-four, amending our zoning ordinance to allow short-term rentals in residential districts, and that motion has been seconded. Discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I'm opposed, sorry.
Motion still carries.
Item E is consideration to first reading of ordinance five-oh-five, amending section two and five of zoning ordinance of Detroit Lakes relative to building height and other building requirements in the R-A agricultural residence district. Larry, you want to take this?
Yes, this would change the R-A district and would have a minimum building height of thirty-five feet. Right now, the minimum building height is two and a half stories, which, that's a little bit hard to define.
Maximum. Maxims.
Maximum, not minimum?
Yes. Last thing, I know you all understand what you think I said, but what I said is not what I meant. Maximum building height is thirty-five feet. On accessory buildings, we've limited them to twenty-four feet in height. Currently, there's some vagueness in the ordinance, and it allows agricultural buildings with an unspecified building height, so we're tightening up the ordinance in this case. These building heights work well in this district because the lot sizes are quite large, approximately two acres, the minimum lot width is a hundred and sixty feet, and the setback requirements are forty feet for the front and mirrored twenty for the side, which also mitigates the building height, because you've got a greater distance between these structures. Unless there are any questions, that's all I have to say about that ordinance.
Okay.
Well, that thirty-five feet is still two and a half thirties, you said?
Well, with all the building code requirements, you wouldn't get much more than that in there.
Okay, all right. Sam?
Last night, CDC reviewed this at quite length, it came out mixed again, but it was put forward as a recommendation to approve this, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made, second, to give first reading of ordinance five-oh-five, amending section three and five of the zoning ordinance to regarding building height and other building requirements in the R-A district. Discussion?
Yeah, I just got a couple of comments. So this is kind of the transition zone, we always, or we typically have in the past brought in annex pieces of property into the city and zoned them R-A, as, as long as the developer wasn't looking for a particular purpose of that land. So this is kind of that balance of free, free enterprise in the county where there's very little restriction, and where we've got more restrictions in the city, so it's kind of that balance point to allow people to do things on larger pieces of property and build their things that they want and they need.
Yeah, I've got to say something on that. We, we had an R-A large lot off of Broadway, right across the industrial park, that sat there for over twenty-five years, and every time we had to get something cleaned up, Priscilla would go out there, and because it was R-A, she couldn't do anything with it, because it's R-A around, we can't do anything with it. And I think sometimes having this stuff being R-A for too long a time is a detriment to the neighborhood, and that one certainly was after twenty-five years of sitting there. It took them almost three and a half weeks to clean the crap out of there after they finally sold the lot, that's how bad it was. But every time Priscilla went out there, can't do anything around, that's R-A property, that's untouchable. I, I, I'm not in favor of R-A, if it's inside the city limits like this has been, we should have an R-A extension, we should give it a zone for the minority. Yes, that has been a concern of mine for a long time, and it still is.
Okay, we have a motion.
The council can do that at the time of annexation, but they can also initiate the rezoning of property in town at any time as well.
But we, they had done that, and it still did not work out, Larry, that was a, you know the property I'm talking about out there, it's a, it's a, it's been a mess, so I'm just saying that we should look at this R-A thing, once it's in the city limits, it should be changed to a zone immediately, not R-A. Just a comment.
Through the discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
For your comment, my, my concern here is just on the accessory height, it is being increased, and I'm worried about the kind of the big shed concept, I, and so that's my, my message. And so that's why I'm...
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, item F is consideration to a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow short-term rental to a fourth bedroom home at 1005 North Shore Drive, Sky and Troy Ingleson. Plating Commission reviewed this, CDC reviewed this, both recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the conditional use permit for short-term rental at 1005 North Shore Drive. So what date?
We'll just have to turn her on and get a license.
Have to turn her on and get a license, Larry, or?
That is correct.
Okay, so motions, did we get a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the conditional use of 1005 North Shore Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we're making that to the end of the CDC.
I think I'm done. I'd like to make it end. We'll move to the public works committee.
Okay, item A was just discussion. Just a reminder that there is a charge for commercial haulers to... Sorry. The item A was just a discussion about the commercial compost site license. Just a reminder that commercial haulers that are cleaning up lawn and that sort of thing need to have a license to haul out to our compost site. Item B, consideration to approving a resolution approving the preliminary engineering report and setting a public hearing for this proposed Summit Avenue Street and Utility Reconstruction Project. Public Works reviewed this and moves to approve that preliminary engineering report preparation and to set a public hearing. Well, that hearing, do you have a date for it, Kelsey?
It's next month, January.
Next, next January.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve... Doing the... Approving the preliminary engineering report and setting a public hearing for next month's council meeting for the proposed Summit Avenue and Utility Reconstruction Project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, consideration to authorizing the advertisement bids for the new Public Works facility. For those of us that have been here for like the last 10 years when we've been talking about this Public Works building, it's actually on the horizon. So Public Works Committee moves to authorize the advertisement of those bids.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded. My last one, please, here.
C.
C.
Motion's been made seconded to authorize the advertisement of bids for the new Public Works facility. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, Public Works moves to accept the donation from the DAV for the new city dock. And if you'll recall, many months ago, Sean was before us presenting the idea of a handicapped accessible city dock, and that's what this donation will go toward.
Okay, is that a motion?
It is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. And that donation was for $36,000 from the DAV.
Glad, thank you, Ron, for me.
So the motion's been made and seconded to accept the $36,000 donation for disabled American veterans for the new city handicap dock.
Right, handicap, accessible.
Excellent, all right.
Man.
Go ahead, man. I'm not speaking against this. I think it's a great donation, great plan. I just want to make to know that this is a portable dock. Because when we look at Westlake Drive through that area, things may be changing. So just... So people aren't set in stone. That's where it has to be if at the time it feels appropriate to them.
Oh, it will go wherever the best place is.
Perfect, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, John, want to give us a short...
I'm not sure if we should feel offended, but... Thank you, Oden and Suki. Takes slightly less time than Oden and Joseph said. I really don't have a lot to report. Obviously, we're wrapped up with a lot of the construction, so there's really nothing to say unless there's questions on Westlake Drive, Wilhelms Ray Z, Highland Drive. I mean, they're all in various states of completion for the winter and start up next summer. Really, the only comment I think I would make was that we finished up the work for the season on the museum parking lot last week. They got as far as they could. They got froze out. Certainly not as far as they hoped to get, but they did manage to get some temporary parking graded in there to at least help alleviate some of the parking issues down there that they've been struggling with. But in the spring, I expect they'll be in their right way to finish that project. Outside of that, we're working on the Campbell and Linden design. Moving that ahead, probably take that to the council sometime in March for bidding. And I think we already touched on the Summit Avenue project. We'll have a hearing next month on that and move that towards bidding in the spring. So any questions?
Thank you, John, that was succinct.
We should have a motion also.
Well, it's coming. Rushing me out here. Public Works moves to accept the city engineers' monthly project status report.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made seconded to adopt the... Accept the city engineers' monthly project status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ron Seaman would call my attention and everybody else's to the fact that there was a special event application on our agenda this month from Project 412. They're going to light the city park from December through February of 2023, so that's pretty cool. We're done.
So because we took that out of the consent, we should probably...
Oh, did he take it off?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't. Was... I obviously was not paying attention. Someone?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the special event application for Project 412 for lighting the city park from mid-December through February 2023. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And?
I'm done.
All right, we're going to go into the finance committee.
Okay, the first item was item A, consideration to approving the 2023 rates for the American Legion campground. We're going to be approximately a 5% increase. So I'm calling a hike and we'll do this without pay.
Yes, so the campground, we met with campground staff, the managers, I'm sorry, the management staff for the American Legion campground, and discussed how the season went and their proposed rates for 2023. Decided that the seasonal rate should have a bit of an increase. The daily rates will remain the same. And so in your packet are the projected increases for 2023. Otherwise, things are going well and seems like campers are back.
Okay, the committee recommends this and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the 2023 rates for the American Legion campground. Discussion?
I'd like to bring this back to them and see if there's a little bit steeper increases in the future. Looking at this, I think they're paying a premium for being right in the beach, right walking distance, comparing it to the other campgrounds. I don't think... I think it's everybody's most desirable thing. I don't think they... They're probably waiting list to get in there. So I would like to see some, maybe some larger jumps in the future if that can be brought back.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, obviously, that was discussed, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree with you, but we're going to hold off for right now and then get some Canadians back down. There is a waiting list of over 100, so there is a waiting list.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, consideration of doing the purchasing of a new playground for the American Legion campground. And they came back with some ideas. And I'm going to turn it over to council and you can tell where we're at on them and we'll get back to you. Make the motion. I'm going to work this.
Mayor Council, something that's been talked about for a few years with current management and previous management before that. Playground there that's there is just really a disrepair. So it's been a need that's been identified for some time to replace the playground equipment. They got a couple of quotes that are in your packet. I think one quote is $109,785. The other quote is for $90,000... $90,235 or something like that. I think when we talked with the management, I think the city's supportive of making the investment in the playground, but we'd like to see them get more quotes. So my recommendation would be is that council is comfortable with it to authorize up to $90,000 for new playground equipment contingent on them getting a few more quotes and look at a few more options.
Okay, we reviewed this and we decided to go ahead with... To make it no higher than $90,000 to get at least an additional two more bids to bring that to the committee if so.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the purchase of new playground equipment for the American Legion campground. Discussion?
I just want to point out that this isn't coming out of our regular funds and it's coming out of the campground proceeds that are shared between the American Legion and the city. So it's not like we're taking money from a park dedication fee or a park budget and not putting it in somebody's neighborhood. And we're doing it out of the...
Proceeds of the campground.
Proceeds of the American Legion campground.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, consideration of approving the LELS union contract for 2023 to 2025. And I'll call on Kelsey to answer that.
Mayor Council, I kind of summarized both C and D since they're very similar. Finance committee has met a few times over the last couple of months to sort of union negotiation strategy. Basically, the proposal or contracts that are in the packet are falling within those lines of what was discussed at our union negotiation strategy meetings. Basically, the wages from a poll standpoint, that's usually what people ask about, it'd be a 4% coal in 2023, 4% coal in 2024, and a 3% coal in 2025. Again, this is in on the high points here, but the other hot topic was certainly health insurance. The proposal, the contract would be... The city's always paid 100% for single coverage and then we have a maximum contribution that we do for family coverage. The proposal includes increasing that max contribution to 1,550 in 2023, 1,650 in 2024, and 1,750 in 2025. Plus, there'd be an HSA contribution of $500 each year. It's the health insurance proposal. Those are kind of the high points. Each of them have a few language tweaks the city was seeking. There's... Since there are law enforcement, there is a UTEA clothing allowance. There's an increase in that from $950, which is currently, to $975 in 2023 and $1,000 of '24 and '25. I think those are the main items. If there's any questions, all happy to be...
Thank you, Kelsey. Item C, LELS, that is for the patrol officers, the site of the officers there. And so I so move that we go ahead and go ahead with this contract. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the LELS union contract for the years 2023 through 2025. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item D is consideration to giving... Approving the MPA union contract. This is for the sergeants. It's identical for the statement increases for compensation and coal. And I view the review of that as well.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the MTEA union contract for 2023 through 2025. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, item E, consideration to a resolution approving the 2022 end-of-year transfer funds. And I'm going to call on Heidi to review that.
Thank you, Chair Seaman. In your packet is a resolution approving the 2022 end-of-year fund transfers. What this does is basically has the store water fund pay their portion of the bond payments that we paid during the year this year. These were all budgeted amounts, but because they are inter-fund fund transfers, we do have to have council approval in order to make fees. So the resolution is in front of you. Again, these were budgeted, so if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Okay, Mayor, we've reviewed this and we recommend that we go ahead and approve this.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the 2022 end-of-year fund transfer.
I believe we need six votes for this. Is there any on this?
I think internal transfers wouldn't necessarily require...
We would, yeah.
I hope you all vote for it anyway.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F, consideration of resolution approving the 2023 fee schedule, which you want to do in August, but I'm going to turn that over to Heidi. She gives us a quick review of that.
Yes, so in your packet again is an update of the fee schedule for 2023. And then also, there are some in there for 2024. That's only for the renting out of some of the city park facilities in the pavilion and the arena. Because we take reservations about a year in advance, we have to set those rates now. So that's why we do that. There are a few changes. The changes are in red in the packet, so you'll note which items are changed. Basically, added a pit waste administrative penalty because of the MS4 item that was added. Changed our commercial dump rates slightly. Did a few minor changes to set our garbage and solid waste hauler fees. And then also a few minor changes under some of our permitting, just to kind of get those in line with each other for, you know, appliance changeouts and installations for things, smaller things like fireplaces, water heaters and furnaces. And that is kind of about it. We did do a little bit of a slight adjustment to some of the park deposits. Previously, it was noted as $25 not refundable deposit on our parks. As you can imagine, our parks are a lot more valuable than $25, so we thought it prudent to do a $100 refundable deposit for those that are renting our park facilities. Other than that, things are fairly consistent from prior years, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, Ron?
Okay, the committee recommends and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt the... Approve the 2023 fee schedule. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, consideration of resolution establishing the 2023 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. This covers on-call pay as well as special pay events and for officers who are selling. So Kelsey, anything you'd like to add to that?
The only change to the pay rates is this for the specialty advancement from $20 and $25 per hour. And then, of course, our chief pay change as we hire a full-time chief.
Committee recommends this, may I so move?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution establishing 2023 pay rates for the Detroit Lakes Fire Department. I think they're working tonight. Two guys ran out of the building. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item H, consideration to approve the Detroit Lakes National Guard Management three... The year to be actually this uncovered for the seven years. And we reviewed all this, so I'm going to... and I'm going to, uh, call on Kelsey to give a quick, uh, quick comment on that agreement.
So what's happening with these microphones?
They've been on since last night, so-
They're wireless, they run.
They're wireless, they're on battery.
Better buy the, better buy the company a few batteries.
Mayor and Council, uh, in your packet is, uh, an updated, uh, management agreement with the Detroit Country Club. Our current seven-year agreement is expiring at the end of this year. Uh, the new seven-year agreement really hasn't changed much. A few things were updated because, uh, the old agreement saw a transition of their, um, their board from a larger number down to a nine-member board, so basically those changes were made in this new contract. Otherwise, it's basically the same, but the previous seven-year management agreement was.
The, uh, the, uh, committee recommends that we just, uh, some-
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve the Detroit Country Club management agreement. Discussion?
Is, are all the other management agreements seven-years, well?
So far, yeah.
Had to go.
Yeah, I think now we've got them all, uh, switched around. Gymnastics was a 20-year, something like that, but their new one is seven, so I think we're all down to seven, but they're standard.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I got a question. Can we put a city council member on that board?
Yeah, so three of the nine members are appointed by the city council, so when there's a seat open, you know, the mayor and the council can appoint one of their own to the board of so desires.
The short, short answer to that is it's not required to be a city council person, but there's nothing that would prohibit it.
I'd be willing to volunteer.
I'd be willing to volunteer to be on that board. I'll take it under advisement. Further discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
And then, just a real quick review on Item N. We've got a great year going in some of our, uh, funds, and like I have Heidi's given a real quick recap for this.
Yeah, so I'll be brief. Um, our food and beverage tax has rebounded very nicely and has been doing quite well. Um, year-to-date, we are up from last year about 2%, just under 2%, so about $7,200. Um, so doing quite well. Um, and that's only through about October, and that's not even finalized, it's through October. Um, our local option sales tax, which obviously pays for the new police department, um, just doing extremely well, so that again, um, year-to-date, um, through our October, uh, estimated, um, payment is at 1.7 million. Um, and if you recall, we had only originally thought that we would, could get about a billion a year, so well, well, low pacing anything we ever imagined that we'd get, and year-to-date, um, about 100,000, well, I'm sorry, about 96,000 over, uh, where we were at, at this point last year. So, doing extremely well, um, and again, looking like we're going to collect the entire 6.7 million allowed by our legislation, um, with next May's, um, tax receipts. So, some decisions to be made, uh, in the future.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. And anything else on finance, Ron?
No, that's all, Jan.
So you're also going to take, I would say, the committee Item A.
Yes, and, uh, it, it just, uh, for the council people and the new council people, invited to our fire chief candidate open house that we're going to have this, this Thursday, um, and, uh, that's going to be December 15th at 6:30 PM at the fire hall to meet the three candidates that are, that are in town for the final interview on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
When is that? When is a vote on that expected to take place, any time, any timeframe that we know of?
For, for the new fire chiefs, that, that will probably be on Friday, if, if things go well, if we-
Is it council? Don't we approve that?
Yeah, so-
We have to prove that, yes, but the, the, uh, approve the campaign would be right on one.
Yeah, so the plan is we're doing the open house Thursday night, um, just a meet-and-greet, and then the interview panel is going to be the second round of interviews, uh, Friday morning, and then hopefully make some sort of selection, uh, so then we can work with whoever the finalist to do the background check, um, you know, discuss offer, wages, and then eventually I go to the city council for approval in January.
Okay, there you go. And there's no action on that, correct, Ron? Getting the liquor gambling control, Matt?
Uh, two things to point out, Mayor. Uh, there is a full-time opening with benefits, uh, during the day, uh, some evening shifts, uh, so if you know anybody interested, please apply. Uh, also, if you're looking for last-minute Christmas shopping, the liquor store is closing at four o'clock on Christmas Eve.
Thank you for that, yes. Madeline tells me there's nothing to bring forward into Public Utilities Commission. Looks like everything on the city administration is in the sent agenda. I do not have a recommendation for the Food and Beverage Board to fill the term of resigned member, Jamie Marks Erickson, uh, but I will try to get something for next month. I would like to reappoint Tony Schmitz to the Tourism Bureau as the city representative and not a chamber representative, and then I have a recommendation for a chamber representative, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Tony Schmitz as the city rep.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to reappoint Tony Schmitz. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. I would like to appoint Mark Birkey to the Tourism Bureau as the chamber rep, and Mark as the general manager of the Leefest, and I would recommend his approval.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to appoint Mark Birkey to the Tourism Bureau as the chamber rep. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. I would like to reappoint Don Marstoon to the Planning Commission. Uh, he served two-year, two, three-year terms, and he's eligible to be reappointed.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to reappoint Don Marstoon. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. Come on. Consideration to the reappointment of Sean Carlson to the Planning Commission. Uh, Sean is fulfilling a term taken by Bruce Emho, and is eligible for reappointment.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to reappoint Sean to the Planning Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. Sean, by the way, is this young gentleman right here. We also have Jay Deraney with us tonight from the back. These are two new city councilmen, if you don't know that. I would like to, uh, I will have to come with a recommendation for the Planning Commission, as Dan Wender is electing to, uh, for his term expires at the end of this year. I would like to recommend reappointing Matt Oakey to the Sports Arena Commission. Matt served one three-year term and is eligible for reappointment.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to reappoint Matt Oakey to the Sports Arena Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. I would like to recommend the reappointment of John Stifel to the Sports Arena Commission. John has served one three-year term and is eligible for reappointment. So, motion's been made seconded to reappoint John Stifel to the Sports Arena Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. I would like to recommend the appointment of Mike Olman to the Sports Arena Commission. He will be fulfilling, fulfilling the term of Sean Eckert, which expires, uh, December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to re, to appoint Mike Olman to the Sports Arena Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. And I have a little recognition I'd like to give.
We'll just make it real fast.
Fine print.
We have, we have two council members who are leaving us, uh, here this evening, and I have a plaque that I'd like to present to Jamie and Madeline, so I will read, I'll just read one, okay?
That'd be good.
Okay. This is a certificate of appreciation, and one is for Jamie Marks Erickson for 14 years as Alderman in Ward II, and I think Madeline was also 14 years as, um, Alderman in Large. Whereas the municipal representative government of the City of Detroit Lakes, ever conscious of this obligation to efficiently and justly conduct the affairs of the City of Detroit Lakes, and whereas the fulfillment of this obligation and the performance of this service requires the dedication of concerned citizens, excuse me, now therefore be to resolve that the city council and citizens of the City of Detroit Lakes express in this way gratitude and appreciation for the many hours of faithful service you have contributed to our community and to the City of Detroit Lakes, together with the hope that your service of 14 years as Jamie, Alderman Ward II, and Madeline, uh, 14 years as Alderman in Large may be reflected and persuade others to follow your example. So congratulations. I want to miss you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
We'll miss you guys.
I will miss you guys.
Don't forget to say to you every month.
Just sit in the back, sit in the back, low, shall we?
Some information and announcements. There's going to be a city council work session on Tuesday, December 20th, at 2:00 PM at the Police Department Community Room, and the agenda items on that, Kelsey, are what?
Mayor, uh, we're going to start things at 2:00 with our new legislators, uh, state legislators, so Senator Ron Kupac and Representative Jim Joy should be there. Uh, then we'll follow that with a Zoom meeting with, uh, our consultants, RDG, to kind of give they an update of where they're at with the pavilion, unless they drive, and may not announce.
Okay. Uh, the Legislative Action Day at the Minnesota State Capitol, January 25th. If you're in distance and attending, please let Kerry know. Kelsey, I'm sure you're going to be right.
Ron and I already signed up, I think.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also on Thursday, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Training will be here, unless it derailed with the ice, and that'll, and that'll be here at 2:30, and that's a great fundraiser for the Food and Beverage. She makes a nice generation of food and beverage, so hopefully it all works out. The joint governance meeting dates are listed in the packet, and the city council meeting dates are listed in the packet. Any additional items from the city staff?
Mayor and Council, if you'd just involve me for a minute, because I usually don't do this, but I'd really like to recognize Kerry, who's sitting next to me, our deputy clerk, because in the last month, we've been really shorthanded, I think, maybe even though Lori's been out, and, uh, we've had a new city hall, we've had unit negotiations, we've had new, uh, technical enrollments, we did fire chief interviews, and I was sick for a week and a half, and she had put up with me, so it's been just a lot over the last month, and we're still trying to get people in the right spot and the right meetings and where we're at, so I just want to recognize her, and, uh, with the holidays coming up, I'll probably give her an extra eight hours of comp time and eight days, so.
So, where's Lori? Did she, did she break her legs or something?
Yeah, Lori's, I can't, probably, hip and her heels, uh, she's all for a few more weeks.
And has Kerry been picking up the ball on that as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, doing both duties, yeah.
I didn't mean to bring something up that I shouldn't. I seem to always do that, it's not the first time. Here, what'd you say? Can you refer to Jamie?
Best wishes to all of you. Thank you to staff so much for your hard work.
Uh, thank you to Dan Wender, Jamie and, and Madeline, it's a pleasure serving with you.
And Natalie?
And Natalie, yep, thank you very much. Um, Merry Christmas.
Madeline?
Happy holidays to everybody. Um, it's bittersweet because I really enjoyed doing the job a lot, and I really enjoyed working with all of you. Council people have been terrific, and there's just, we can't say enough about our city staff. Honestly, they go above and beyond, and they are truly dedicated to our city, and they're a pleasure to work with.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Well, I, uh, I do want to say that 14 years for Natalie and Jamie, a lot of meetings, a lot of reading, and, uh, just doing a good job. We maybe didn't agree all the time, but I think overall, probably 85% of the time, we might want to drink, and then when we-
Eighty-five percent.
That's, that's the date, though. But normally, we, normally, I have to say, I think most of that, we do bring pretty much, uh, things that come to the board, and, uh, and when we're down with the meeting, we're still friends, and that's, that's the key, we don't hold any drugs because we happen to have a vote, so I'm just glad I have to be private. But I also want to say to the two new council people sitting in the audience, we've got a joint governance meeting coming up on January 3rd. If you can be at that, it's 7:00 in the morning, but if you can be there, you know, it's part, part of your role, and I hope that you will consider legislative date down at the Capitol, January 25th. This is where we get to go down and meet all the new legislators that we have, but it's key that we get to know these people, and, uh, because for the past 20 years, we've got, we've known Mark Port, and we've known Eakin, and they've known us, and then they did a lot of good for us, and it's because that we've known them and they've known our city, and we've got to create a new relationship or support that, not just the new ones, but the existing ones do have to. We need, we need that help, the support, uh, from them to get a lot of things done here in Detroit Lakes that we've had done over the past years, and many projects that wouldn't have happened without their support, so keep that in mind. Thank you.
Dan?
Yeah, like I said, I'd like to thank, uh, the members that are going off the board, you know, it's, like, again, I probably haven't agreed with you all the time, but I appreciate the conversation and appreciate really the long, long dedication that, uh, um, both, or all, all four of Natalie, Madeline, Jamie and Dan have put in, the work and the effort to, to make us what we're, we're at today, and I also welcome all the new members that are coming on board, because, um, as we've seen tonight, we've got a lot of work to do, we've got a lot of things that we need to figure out, and I look forward to 2023, and, uh, thank you.
Okay, Mandy?
I will just say happy holidays to everybody as well. It's been, excuse me, a huge learning experience, and I want to thank both, uh, Madeline and Jamie for being wonderful role models and mentors, and for their leadership and contributions all these 14 years, and I hope to follow in their footsteps, being a good leader as well. Um, and thank you to city staff. I know it's been crazy, and I get to see you very rarely, but you do an amazing job. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron? Madeline, Jamie, thank you. According to Ron's math, we agree 100% of the time, so. Uh, Merry Christmas, everybody. All right, business of this council is coming to a conclusion. Meeting's adjourned.